Good evening. Thank you all for coming here on such a gorgeous night. I am calling this special board meeting to order. This meeting has been appropriately advertised. Ms. Coleman, roll call please.
Mrs. Brown. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mrs. Devine.
Here.
Mrs. Maya.
Here.
Mrs. McCulsky.
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Here.
Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Mrs. Z.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Dilkis.
Here.
Mr. Chu.
Here. Let's see. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
There was no executive session for tonight's meeting. So we'll go on to section three, which is a brief presentation about the borough and school district plan for partnership. And so I think we'll start with...
So while folks are walking in, first and foremost, we would just like to thank everybody for being here. We would also like to publicly thank our borough and our Board of Education for working collaboratively in order to support the needs of our children in our community. And so from the Board of Education perspective, everything that we do is in service support of students and their families. And what's being presented tonight is consistent with that but is also fiscally responsible and takes into consideration the overarching needs of the community. And so we're going to hear from our chief financial officer, Mrs. Coleman.
Good evening. On the next two slides you guys have seen before, or most of you have seen before, they've been on our district website. But just kind of going back since 2024, current year, and what's estimated for next year, basically our upside down, our increased costs and our lack of revenues, for no other way of putting it, and a lack of state aid, which is causing us to be in the situation tonight. I know this is hard to read. It'll be on the website. So when we received our state aid notice from the Department of Education, they recalculated our local fair share. They did change the funding formula slightly. Instead of using your most recent year's property values and incomes as reported through your tax returns, they now did an average of three years. But unfortunately for Collingswood, it kind of made it worse. So instead of being upside down for local fair share of five and a half million, we're now just under nine million. So what that means is the commissioner and the governor, when they look at Collingswood, they are starting to take state aid away from our school districts because they consider us fully funded through their eyes. So that $28 million number that is highlighted in a red box, that's what they think Collingswood should be paying. And we know that that's not what you are paying, and nobody's asking you to pay 28 million. But that is how Trenton gauges us. So when they figure out our funding, that's the number that goes in, and they start backing stuff out of that. So this is a definite factor, any amount of state aid we receive. And we're one of those districts that are going to be losing state aid over indeterminate period of time. We lost about $100,000 this year. I assume it's going to be the same, if not more, going forward, like I said, for an indeterminate period of time until we get a new governor and a new funding formula. So...
This next slide is a slide that I presented, I believe, last board meeting. But it is essentially what Ms. Coleman, our business administrator, just talked about, which is just the how basically our funding as a school district has evolved over the last decade or so. And what you'll see is this red line at the very top. That is the amount of funding that the state says, you know, expects that we receive from our local taxes. And the blue line is what we're actually able to receive because of our 2% cap. And this is what Ms. Coleman was saying about how, why, the reason why the state is decreasing, one of the reasons why they're decreasing their funding to the district over time is because they keep on calculating that we should be getting more and more funding from our local residents, you know, like ourselves. And so that arrow, that pink arrow, is that gap in funding, where basically the state says, well, you should be getting this much money. But in reality, we're only getting that blue line. And what that's led to in this past year, and one of the big reasons why we're here today, is a $3.6 million budget deficit for the coming school year, just to continue providing the same level of services, programming, and staffing as this year, because of inflationary costs and so forth. So that is the challenge that we're faced with here today. And that's why I think we're so appreciative of what Dr. McDowell is now going to be talking about.
So one of the responsibilities of the district leadership team is to explore every potential option for additional revenue. And so over the last several years, we have been pretty aggressive in pursuing philanthropic or grant-based support. That funding is short-term. It fills an immediate gap, but it is not sustainable. And so over the last two and a half years, we were able to secure about $7.2 million in grant funding. But each of those dollars has strings attached and also has an expiration date, with many of those dollars that are falling off. Some fell off this past year. Some will fall off at the end of this current year. And so it was important for us as a school district to go to our borough partners, identify what the challenge was, and seek their assistance. And so on February 10th, the Board of Education unanimously approved the ability to request support, keeping in mind, we fully are aware and understand that times are tight for us all, and that our borough is not sitting on millions and millions of dollars. And so that wasn't the ask, thinking that there was money that was readily available. We knew that it would be a tremendous ask, and therefore, we're extremely appreciative of the work and the effort that it took just for us to get to this point today. And so included in the long-term plan are both immediate needs and then long-term discussions that are yet to be held, in order to firmly solidify that what's good for the district is good for the borough, and what's good for the borough is good for the district. And we can only do that by working collaboratively together for the common good of our community. And so what you will see in the next few slides is a proposal that identifies low to no tax impact locally, in addition to looking at some of the pilot funds, of which many are expiring in future years, looking at other collaborative ways to leverage the authority of the municipality and the flexibility of the school district in order to problem-solve this math challenge, also while providing additional resources and value to our community for the public good and the public usage. In addition to going together to look at the goals and the objectives of the referendum in September, and exploring all available options to achieve many of those goals without increasing the tax burden on our residents, and then also a deep commitment between both organizations to work collaboratively to go to a public vote and a public referendum to secure long-term funding this September. And the slides that you see will outline that. And Mr. Chu is going to share those.
About an hour or so before this meeting, there was a joint statement that was released both by the borough and by the district outlining this agreement. The next couple of slides will pull out the six major points from that joint statement. So the first piece is about just focusing on eliminating the current upcoming budget deficit for 2025-26 school year, that $3.6 million that I spoke about a few minutes ago. And so the way in which this agreement between the borough and the board works to do this is, the borough was able to identify areas within their pilot funding and a little bit of surplus funding to be able to help with about $750,000 of additional funding for this next coming school year. That was our point number one. Point number two here is that basically, we are going to work together with the borough. We're going to review the school financial documents together. And then from there, after that process, the borough will commit to funding the rest of the upcoming budget deficit for 2025-26 school year. And I think when the commissioners come up, they can kind of explain that this mechanism a little bit more. But they were able to find a creative way to do this in the short term with very little tax impact on the community. And then finally, the last piece here for closing this gap is, there is a discussion at the state level, proposal from, that we've heard from the governor, to give school districts who are well below their local fair share. So that little pink arrow from before on that line graph, that districts who have a big kind of gap between their local fair share and their local levy, to give school districts opportunity to increase revenue through going above their 2% cap. And if that proposal is passed in time for this budget season, we will use that to lower the need for borough contribution. Now finally, the second piece... The second piece is planning for the future. So the last three points on the, in the joint statement and the agreement, which is, first, that there's going to be a shared recreational facility development. And so the borough and the district will work together to redo and update the athletic fields and to really bring value to the community in terms of recreational space for all. We will also form a joint committee to plan out the long-term facilities needs, and to really look at addressing the needs that were identified during the September 2024 bond referendum. And then finally, as Dr. McDowell stated, with the borough's support, we're going to go out in September to a vote, to ask the community for longer-term funding support, so that we will not encounter this type of deficit in future years. And so that, those are the six main points from the agreement and from that were listed out inside the joint statement that was sent out probably about an hour, hour and a half ago. So at this point, what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to move to committee of the whole, where we've today asked the commissioners to join us at the dais to discuss this joint agreement. And so first, I think what we'll do is give the board members a second to move back to their seats, and then I'll ask for a motion to move to committee of the whole. So is there a motion to open committee of the whole?
Abused.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so at this point, I'd like to ask the commissioners if they would like to come up and join us at the dais to discuss the partnership between the borough and the district. In the meantime, as they are walking up, Dr. McDowell, do you want to mention the Panther Pantry?
So... Part of what we've added to our official board action is making sure that we are continuing to promote our Panther Pantry. And so in the back of the room, you will see one of our phenomenal teachers, Ms. Niesner, who runs our Panther Pantry. This is an opportunity for us. It's just a student-run activity where they are generating donations and additional resources for families in need. And so as part of our commitment to supporting it at every board meeting, we send out messages to the community. They are always willing to accept non-perishable items. They also accept cash. And so it goes to a good cause, and it goes specifically to help Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland families in need. And so at the, at the back is Ms. Niesner. Please check it out and talk with her. Thank you so much.
And also mention, I believe that Panther Pantry will be here our next board meeting as well, and maybe a few in the future. So if you don't get an opportunity this time, please contribute if you can next time. So to start, really, a few things. You know, I think y'all know how the microphones work. You're going to have to share two amongst three. So thank you. But I want to start first by thanking the commissioners for their hard work and partnership here on this. And I think it fills a really big need now and really helps us plot a path forward in terms of partnership between the borough and the board. But I wanted to give y'all a moment, if y'all want to say a few words or add anything to this.
Thank you. I want to thank the board, if you don't mind. I have to stand while I'm talking. It's a part of my, there's no way. And the hands will be gone. I wanted to just try to thank the board, thank all the professionals that have been involved in this. This has been, well, it's been a long month. It's March the 10th. It's been a month. And I want to just kind of walk through a couple of the issues that the president was touching on, just to explain to everyone the impacts and how it fits in to borough operations, okay? The, our goal in all this was trying to get this plan that we've been talking about, when we presented it here on Thursday, was trying to make it so that it did not cause undue hardship on taxpayers. And so really, what changed for us is the willingness of the board to entertain an operating referendum in September, so that it kind of changed the ask from a big tax increase forever, okay, that we would decide, to how do we fill in the gap for this year to get us to a referendum that allows voters to have input and to decide this. So what we were able to do is we were kind of reassigning the, some of the pilot payments that were requested to cover this year. It took a little from surplus. It's going to mean a, an additional $20 tax increase on the municipal budget, okay? We make those changes. It's for this year. And then what we will do, what the borough will do, is we will borrow the money that's necessary to fill the gap for the 25-26 budget. And what we, in the world of municipal finance, we don't have to take that to what they call permanent financing. So if you think of it like your home mortgage, if you add, put an addition on the house, you have construction financing that, you know, you'll pay your contractor as you're going along for a big number, $100,000. And then when it's all done, you can roll that into a mortgage, a more permanent mortgage, that runs out for 10 years or 15 years, so you can pay it out over time. So in the borough's finances, we can do what they call short-term notes. So if we end up at the number's 3 million, whatever the number is, pick a number, we can borrow that money. We won't, we will have to begin making interest-only payments in 2026. That will have a negligible impact on our budget, roughly $90,000, if it's two and a half mil, I think is what I had the auditors run. And, and what we will be able to do, since the diversion of the pilot payments goes to this year, and it's for this year only, because there'll be a referendum in September, then next year, those payments won't continue coming into the schools. And we can use that money in later years to pay off that two and a half, whatever the money is we put in for this deficit. We can use that money to pay off that debt, okay? So we get to accomplish getting the, getting some aid into the schools this year, getting, working, once we agree on what numbers are, we get to work on solving that cap issue that everyone talks about. And what a referendum will allow us to do is basically reset that cap, reset that cap number, so that for some time after that, not forever, but for some period of time after that, it won't be the issue that it is now, okay? So that's a really important piece. As we were looking at this, like fixing this budget issue, we just didn't think that was enough. And that's why we have all these other components. We believe that like addressing the field issue here, and also for the borough at large, the rec plan, we just came out with it the other day, kind of got lost in the shuffle last Wednesday night, but it is up on our website. Kind of got lost in the shuffle because of the focus on this. And, but really, a focus from a whole lot of people were to do some improvements in Knight Park, and also improvements here. We'll be able to borrow $15 million to put toward that. And again, with that short-term financing and long-term financing, we'll be able, the borough will be able to slot that in with debt that is retiring over the next couple of years, so that it won't have any impact on taxpayers, okay? So... Don't, it ain't done yet. Don't clap, all right? Hold your applause to the end, like in six months, the end, okay? So the, and then the last piece that Roger talked about was the, the global kind of referendum last year. I know a lot of people, you know, it's still, there's still a lot of kind of hangover emotion from all that. And we want to kind of start fresh on it. Virtually, everybody was in favor of the goals, not only improving facilities, but, but addressing equity issues in education. And this will give us, starting with a joint task force, we start off together on that, that journey to try to address those issues, okay? So it kind of covers everything, but, but it does it in a way that, it still leaves some things up to voters. There's still a lot of work to get done here. But it does it in a way that won't crush people. And, and that's what the goal was. So this is a PhD degree in municipal and school finance. Not exactly been the easiest thing to do, but we want to thank everybody's support and cooperation through this. I joked with a group that, with the bid the other day, that I think this year has been a full moon every day. It's certainly been a full moon for the last month every day. So thank you for all your help, and we're happy to answer questions and talk, anything you want to talk about.
Those applause, Jim, are for me, because I know I was speaking. So, listen, the details Mayor went over, and it was great. You know, we talked about before that I've said that we're all in the same boat, and we either sink or we float together. But why we sink could be very, very different, depending on who you are, right? In this instance, you could sink, if we cut staff and we cut teachers, right, and the educational experience for students being limited and changed, that would be sinking. But for other people, it's affordability, and it's being able to stay in one's home, and being able to, you know, just make, make things work on tight budgets. And I think what we've tried to do here is not take sides, but try to find that, that area that keeps everyone in the boat, everyone afloat. And I think we did. So today's a good day, right? Today, today's a good day, but, you know, governing doesn't stop. And I think that's why we, the board and municipality alike, have talked about the importance of continuing conversations on new issues and anything else. Because, because ultimately, you know, kind of just like education, if you stop using it, it'll stop working. And so we're going to, we're going to keep at it. Save the budget here, but really, and the budget's important, but we also want to make sure, working collaboratively with the community, with everyone, is to make sure that we're providing the best education to our students. And I think everyone can have a, have a role in that. And I look forward to it. And I thank the board. I, this was not easy, but, but things that are worth it rarely are. And I look forward to keeping at it.
I deeply appreciate the collaborative effort of the board and the borough. There's a lot of creative problem-solving. But I really want to express my thanks for public engagement between deciding, finding out the numbers, getting to the, getting to the meat of it, showing your passion, helping us help you. It's been, it's been a real outpouring of community, and it's, it's important. And I'm very grateful.
I wanted to see if any board members wanted to make any comments or had anything they wanted to say.
I just wanted to say thank you to the borough, to BOE leadership. This crew worked all weekend, not me, this crew, and to try to figure out, you know, a good meeting spot. So I appreciate everybody for all your hard work. And last week, we were in a much different area. And today, I can have happy tears instead of sad tears. So thank you, everybody, for your collaboration.
Absolutely. To echo Maggie, I said this to a few members of the board yesterday, that I felt like I could finally take a breath today, in a way I have not in quite some time. So very grateful for the collaboration, very grateful for the time over a weekend, as Maggie said. Really appreciate the collaboration, and I'm excited about what comes next.
I'm going to go ahead and third that, I guess. It's been a very emotional, emotional week for us all. And we're really grateful to all of you. And thank you for doing what you didn't need to do and coming in and trying to help us out. So we appreciate it.
I'm really appreciative of the creative thinking, especially since so many of these, you know, these projects seem to reflect not just some of the educational needs, but our community needs as well. I think that, like you said, Rob, that this will benefit people who have children in schools and people who engage with the community moving forward. And I think it's a real inspiration to our students. So as a parent, thank you.
Echoing again, thanks for the commissioners for stepping up to help us face this problem. And again, leadership for really taking this on. We have a lot of work to still do, but this allows us to at least breathe and not have to fear the worst. But we still have a lot of work for our kids, and we have a lot of things that we still want to accomplish. And I think as a board, we know that. But this does grant us the flexibility right now to focus on those pieces. So again, thank you and appreciate everyone coming out and for the public for making this, pushing us to the table.
Just wanted to say thank you from across the pike for the rising freshmen that are coming in from Woodland this year, and hopefully lots more of them in the next years to come.
And I'm Mayor Chris. As representative of Oakland, you know, we had a discussion the other day about how Oakland's budget's okay right now. But that's only to fifth grade. And then so our, our kids become Collingswood's kids. So it's good to collaborate with all this. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo what everyone has says. Thank you so much for really, truly putting the students first and agreeing to work together. So really appreciate that.
Well, you know, it's, we're going to keep the thank you parade going. And also really, you know, I'll do, you know, I, don't start me with a good time, all right? So thank you for really the great work this weekend. And I would love to see that it isn't an emergency dire call next time, right? Like, I'm just going to say that out loud for the record. Like, can we figure out how to stitch this together going forward continually? And the Hail Mary, we appreciate you catching it, but really want to challenge us all to show up in this way going forward, because it is, we all rise together. So really, just I appreciate it and hope that we've built the muscle that we need to continue doing this.
Well, you can't go without me. I have to say thank you now. You left me? Yes. I want to thank everybody. I'm new, so I'm learning still, and I kind of got a crash course in all of this. But I do appreciate it. It's been a lot, just learning this. But I do appreciate everybody who's come together and made this happen for our community and our kids and our teachers.
I was just going to say, now that, you know, we're in a love fest, that's great. But get ready for the phones to start ringing from both, for both parties, because our neighboring districts are kind of all in the same boat, right? Township, Haddonfield, everybody's nodding, we all know. So I'm sure they're all going to be like calling, like, how did you do this? So let's just make sure we memorialize all this and just share it all over and just hammer the governor with everything that we're doing, because that's the only way he's going to wake up, really.
So I'll jump in here to echo what Ms. Coleman just said, which is that I think part of the long-term solution here is continued advocacy, both by the board and, you know, by the borough at the state level, for, you know, a real, I think, examination of how we fund schools within our state, because of how important they are, and also considering the big concern about needing to maintain affordability while also meeting the needs of our students. And I think, you know, they're probably up in Trenton, used to hearing us call and knock on the doors. And I think what's really effective is when there's also a large contingent of community members, right, not, not Not, not just elected officials who knock on their doors and say, hey, there needs to be a solution, because as Ms. Coleman has mentioned, we're not the only district in this, uh, situation, but we are, are lucky in that we've found at least a, a, a solution for this coming year. And again, thankful for the commissioners for their support there. And, and I also want to take a moment to, to thank Dr. McDowell, Ms. Coleman, and Ms. Howell Turner for, for their extraordinarily hard work over the past, you know, months trying to navigate, um, uh, this, this budget cycle, may have to get the state and, and do their best to, to find the funds to keep the services, programming and staff that, that our, our kids deserve and, and need, and, and that, I think, the, makes the town better for, for having those type of programs and services around. And so I want to, uh, you know, personally thank them for their hard work. Yeah, please, please.
You know, Bethan, when you mentioned about other towns, and I, I hope the lesson that we can all take out of this is that the answer in politics, especially where there's unlimited wants and needs and limited resources, is never more, right? More is just almost impossible, but the idea is how, and how is really a creative process, and sometimes it's an academic exercise, and it's art, and it's technical, and so when they ask us, you know, it's like, it's not really just about more, it's about how, and collaboration and creativity is real, and, and really just due diligence and going over and over again is what got us here, and it's good, but now we'll work on better, right? That's what we'll all do, we all want that, so.
Can I ask a question? Being mindful of the, I, I'm appreciative of the energy right now relative to Thursday's meeting, um, and also want to be mindful around, Bethan, you are, this is your heavy, your Herculean lift, so timeline, right? Like, what is the time for the next, the one through three? Uh, sorry, guys, just like, because I understood it as of the essence, so want to just be mindful and anticipation that folks are trying to know, what does the next step look like? Is that next week, a couple weeks?
So, so I'll, I'll jump in here, because I think a lot of those pieces are, I think, uh, Ms. Coleman is going to be, you know, working with, uh, the, um, the, the Borough CFO to, to do some reviews of, of budget documents. But in terms of the timeline for the board and also for the public to know, uh, as a board, we have a requirement to submit a tentative budget, so preliminary budget, to the County Department of Education representative, so the county executive superintendent, for their, uh, full review and approval by March 19th. And so today originally was going to be our, um, meeting to pass that preliminary budget, which is I think, uh, why Ms. Devine said that, we had, we had a, a committee meeting on Thursday that was, uh, it was a, a, it was not a, a pleasant meeting unfortunately, because, because of the budget gap, and so now, hopefully, when we have that next committee meeting, uh, we, we can be excited for what we can do next year. And so, right now, we've postponed the passing of that preliminary budget, uh, to next week, and I'll be in discussions with board members about the, the specific day, just to make sure that, that we can, uh, we can all, all make that, um, and then, so that will be the first step. And then, or the, the finalized budget, um, uh, will be submitted towards the end of, of April, and that, uh, basically, there's, there's this reconciliation process, uh, between the county review and the finalized budget.
Add, from the borough perspective, it's, it's, uh, it's this conversation that goes on, on, on seeing if there's any way that we can lower the number somehow, something we can do, whatever, but get agreement on that number, and then we're gonna have to take some official action in terms of, uh, really, probably at this point, just authorizing an agreement that we're gonna do, and then after that, we'll be doing the official action to actually raise the money and everything like that. So, now, we know, we know the timeline, and we'll do specials if we have to, to get it, get it through.
Roger, can I just clarify, sorry? So this will be discussed in, um, the Finance Committee next, next week, you say?
The, uh, sorry, what will be discussed?
The, the progress.
Yeah, so the, the, so there, I, there likely won't be a, uh, well, we'll see, there likely won't be a, a committee meeting for it, because we'll be passing the, just the tentative, uh, budget with full funding, um, is, is, is the plan, right? Uh, but, you know, depending on, on what our progress is, we'll, we'll see if we need to have a committee meeting on that, um, but otherwise, yeah.
So what happens between now and then is I'm gonna meet, obviously, with the, the borough official, um, their auditor and my auditor, just to go over everything, and then everything that I did for the Thursday meeting has to then be undone, so that's gonna take a while. So, I checked in both Monday and Tuesday, this cafeteria is available, unfortunately, I am not. So it's looking, everybody checked their calendars possibly for Tuesday, because Steve can sit in for me, I can have somebody sit in, but, um, possibly for Tuesday, the 18th at 6:30. Same place, same time, this way we meet the requirement for submitting by midnight on, uh, March 19th. Actually, excuse me, four o'clock PM. That's when they leave, so.
And I will say, I did ask Ms. Coleman, and it is a, a manual process to, to undo all of those pieces within, within the, the state budgeting software, so it does take a considerable amount of time, and, and again, you know, thanks again to, uh, Dr. McDowell, Ms. Coleman, Ms. Howell Turner for, for their hard work here. If there's nothing else from, from folks, I, you know, again, I, I want to thank the commissioners for making out tonight, for, uh, we, we will, we, we will, but, um, but if you'd like to, yeah, I, we can stand here, sure. Yeah, yeah, if you would like, if you'd like to, then, uh, feel free to, um, but again, want to thank you for, for all the hard work here and, and for this partnership. Yeah, so with that, can we take a motion to exit committee the whole? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, at this moment, sorry, oh, yeah. Yep, so section five, there, uh, is there, yeah, is there a motion, so it's item 5.01 is approval of minutes, so we're motioning to approve the minutes of the February 2024, uh, 24th, 2005, or 2025 regular board meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And then is that an, all in favor? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, we are now going to open up our, to the first public comment section, and so that's section six, uh, and so I have a little statement here, so, "The purpose of public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional, more general comments may be made later in the meeting during our second public comment section. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. Uh, we will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that's being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying comments may be made by the board president after a public comment or at the end of public comments. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment, and Ms. Coleman will assist me by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record."
Hi, Kevin Walker, 401 West Franklin, uh, thank you very much for all your hard work, we appreciate it, uh, love the collaboration, uh, let's keep it going. Could you guys talk a little bit more about point number six? Because, uh, as I understand it, this is essentially a stopgap measure, it gets us through this very problematic year, but the structural deficit about which we've been discussing for months and months still exists unless the governor is gonna change the funding formula, which I assume he's not gonna do. So, come September, we're gonna have a referendum, and, you know, that's where the voters have an opportunity to express their opinions, but, I mean, that's, that's the big issue, isn't it? I mean, that's where we have to make the hard choices. So if you could all just talk about that a little bit more, so we don't have any illusions that whatever we accomplish today is gonna go into the subsequent years, because I don't think they will, we're still gonna have to address the hard issues that have been deferred as a result of, uh, the borough's hard work and your hard work.
I'll, I'll jump in really quickly here, uh, as Mr. Walker said, num, item number six on the, um, joint statement, uh, does point to a future referendum that, that the board is planning out to go, um, with the borough's support in September to raise additional revenues, uh, to help kind of close that structural funding gap. And so yes, as Mr. Walker mentioned, it is, uh, our current, the current additional funding is a stopgap, uh, measure for this coming school year, and we will need to go out to find solutions, longer-term solutions for this structural deficit.
Hi, I'm Katie DeShane, 11 Mebolene, um, I had a similar question there about number six, just understanding if that referendum that's being proposed for September is just for potential tax, or to close the gap, whether that be increased taxes or whatever. But then point number five, which is the Joint Committee for Long-Term Facilities Equity planning to address the failed referendum for this past year, it sounds like that could potentially be a second referendum then in the future, or there's gonna be a plan to try to close that gap with borough funds? That wasn't quite clear to me, what the plan there was to address number five. And then the third thing I just wanted to clarify was, I saw on the note that you guys sent out, um, earlier today, and thank you for sending that out in anticipation of this meeting, it was really helpful, um, was the contract offer was mentioned, that it would be allowing us to fully fund the contract, and so I was wondering, what is the timing of that? Is there still negotiations that need to go on, or does that get signed now, or do we have to wait for the funding sources to come through?
One, on the, on the, um, the facilities work, the, the task force stuff, a long term. So there, at the end of last year, there was a new law passed, new statute, that allowed of a s- kind of a system where the involvement of the county improvement authorities, the town and the school district, okay, could get the facilities work done through the, the improvement authority, um, borrowing the money. The town guaranteeing the repayment of that money, and the facilities work would be done, and then the schools would be paying in essence like a lease back, okay, to pay the debt. So, one of the things that we want to explore, listen, we're starting ground zero, everything gets explored, but one of the things to explore is utilization of that, and if it's a cheaper, if it's a less expensive to taxpayers way to go, to get done all those, all those things that we want to try to get done.
And that's for like physical buildings, right, when we say facilities?
Yes, yes, physical buildings, yes.
Thank you.
And then, so, there's a, I think, as Mayor Maylie said earlier, it's a PhD municipal and, and, and school finance, right? There's a lot of discussions there in terms of how that works. Um, and then, I know this is a question that's come often, the, the, uh, 3.6 million dollar deficit and filling that hole will mean that we are able to, um, uh, meet our, our contract offer without any staff layoffs, and that's one of the, the nice things about being able to fill that, that, that deficit.
Name is Manny Cavuru, 947 Oriental. Clearly, there is a scarcity of resources, lots of competing sort of needs that the community has, and many of us feel that education is a very high priority. My understanding is 70% of the residents who are gonna pay taxes, uh, do not have kids in school, and I'm part of that demographic. So my recommendation for the people that are the leadership representing the school system is, uh, uh, a very aggressive messaging. How and, how to do that, and what are the mechanics of that, I'm not here to discuss that, but the idea is that outreach, uh, to the, uh, uh, community members that especially, that are gonna be asked to pay, you know, increased taxes or whatnot in the future, you need a mechanism for really clearly articulating the priorities, and that it is really, really important, uh, because you're competing for resources with other aspects of that. And, um, uh, and, you know, it's public opinion, and we're, you're competing for that, and I'm gonna very strongly make that recommendation to maybe even have a subgroup that might include community members on that messaging strategies and so forth. Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment to, to thank Mr. Cavulu for, for his statement about, uh, making sure that we include, uh, messaging for, uh, community members who, who do not have children in schools. I am one of them, I, I do not have children, and so that means a lot to me to make sure that we are messaging, uh, to not just parents, but also, uh, folks like myself who, who do not have children in schools, because I think a lot of folks would agree that regardless of that, uh, strong schools are important for a community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Casino, and I live at 528 Jesamine Avenue, and, uh, I've lived here for 48 years, and, uh, one of the reasons I moved to Collinswood is because it had good schools. Even though I've, we don't have children, uh, good schools keep the property values up, and make this a place that people want to live in, okay? So, I need a little bit of education on some of this stuff. For instance, what precisely is this three points, whatever, million dollars going to be spent on? Now, this is a short-term fix to fill a hole, uh, that is caused by the state of New Jersey not funding things properly primarily, at least in my opinion, and, uh, that none of the money should be spent frivolously, so I'm interested to know, uh, how this is going to be used to, uh, to maintain the, the teaching staff and the quality of education here. What physical, uh, improvements in particular are being contemplated? And one of the things that raised my hackles, and, uh, those of many of the other people around me that I, that I talked to in my neighborhood, uh, was a proposal to do something with the football stadium? And, uh, I mean, I grew up in Texas, and Texas football, high school football is an industry, okay? And, uh, our first high school, All-American from my high school was Kyle Rote. Last one that I know of was Tommy Nobis, who was the best, best linebacker in the United States at the time. But anyway, uh, so I take that sort of stuff seriously, but I don't think that in an emergency situation, redoing the football stadium and putting down AstroTurf is a big priority. So things like that, you know, what physical improvements are you talking about? How has the student population of Collinswood increased? And in what demographics, you know, what age groups? So that the money's not just being spent, but being spent wisely and with good purpose. So these are the kinds of questions and issues that I and my neighbors have been discussing. Now, I don't know that any of them are, are here tonight, or were at the, uh, township meeting the other day, I'm here, I was at the township meeting too, and, uh, so this is a very important thing, but it can't be done foolishly, and I fear...
Mr. Casino, thank you for, for your time, your two minutes, thank you.
I just fear that, that, uh, better controls are necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Casino.
Thank you.
I think this is a, a question that I've heard come up a few times, and so I want to be direct that the 3.6 million dollars to, that would fill this deficit is going directly to saving, uh, uh, staff positions for, for next year.
So, I'm Karina Sashis, 607 Eldridge. Karina Sashis, 607 Eldridge, um, so I was just coming up, because in the text message I received from you this afternoon, it did state, um, that the, the current plan would be able to offer the board's, wait, fund the board's offered contract? So I'd like to know, is that the one that the CEA has declined already, or is it the one that the CEA is asking for? Also, I noticed that the whole correspondence between you guys sharing office space at the old Zane School kind of came off the table, which I was a little curious about, because if your lease expires in September at Good Shepherd, where are your offices gonna go if you don't have plans to purchase? I don't see them, you know, continuing to give you office space when they're looking to... to sell the building. So I would just like clarification on those two points.
To, to be clear about the, the point about the, this funding helping us to fully fund our offer to the, the teachers, so that would be our above-county-average offer that, that we have had on the table since September.
Roger, can I, I just want to address, first off, all of you clappers, you're invited to the Borough Commission meetings every first Monday. It's most clapping I've ever heard at a public meeting, so you're all invited to come out. But I want to just, Karina reminds me just of one thing. The, one of the other parts of this plan, like the Borough's original plan, which we are going to be heavy-duty doing, is for all of this, the, the state has adopted a new property rebate, property tax rebate program, stay in New Jersey. And we, in, later in April, the Borough, we're hosting the Division of Taxation to come down and give a briefing, because they have changed the application process so that eligible seniors, seniors just have to file one form. There's like, three different programs. You file one form, and then the state just evaluates where you're eligible, what you're eligible for. But the new program is actually pretty good. It is, it is granting a rebate to persons 65 and over with an income below $500,000 a year. And what it does is it rebates one-half of your property taxes up to, this year, I'm pretty sure it's a max of $6,500, next year is a max of $13,000, okay? So part of what we intend to do is literally hit every household with someone 65 and over and make sure they submit this application to ensure, again, to help on the affordability piece of this, and help just make it easier on everyone as we're all going through the process for the rest of this year, major component, okay? That's it.
Hi, I'm Eva, I live at 170 Lonside. I was at the town forum, and I brought up that I felt like the teachers were...
Can you give our, our last name, please?
Gutwin, G-U-T-W-E-I-N. And I was at the town forum, and I was, I kind of felt like I need, I got some kind of bolster that the teachers were going to be a, you know, back priority and all of this. And I think that, sounds like it's getting that way, but I also think the teachers are kind of on their, like, last thread, and I'm wondering if there's going to be some kind of sustainable bringing back interventionist, bringing back positions that were lost last year, and trying to make actual, really solid community behind the teachers in addition to supporting a fair contract. So I was just hoping I'd hear more about that. I don't hear much about that yet. Thank you.
What, I think one of the, one of the key pieces of, of this joint agreement that will, will help to address that, and will, and that will be a big part of discussion, is that item number six, right, about the, the referendum that, that the district will go out for in September 2025, and, and to bring in that, that funding necessary in order to hopefully not just sustain services within our schools, but also add to.
Christine Kravitz, 431 Park Avenue. Question on point number five, interested in how that committee is going to be formed? Who's going to be a part of it? Who will be invited to it? How long will it take? And then, point number six, last year was my first experience with a referendum. It seemed that there had been a large opportunity for community feedback, but not necessarily any iterations based off of that feedback. So with the same kind of six-month timeframe now, will that feedback be used in improving the plan prior to a vote?
So the, the question about point number five, I think we're, we're still going to be in discussions on how, how to put that joint committee together, and so that's a...
Just answer your questions, it's yes, 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 all of it, okay? Heavy-duty public engagement, yes.
And the, and the committee will include members of the public as well. Like, there will be some, some suggested on our end, some suggested on the district, and it'll be a, a broad sampling of people for proper input.
Hello, Trey Ramsburg, 32 East Coulter Avenue. I'm not here to ask clarifying questions, I'm here to call a spade a spade. This is not a success story, this is a bailout, a bailout that the board had to beg for. I said before, a couple meetings ago, that if the board came to an agreement with the teachers and signed a union contract, which they have not done since then, then it would not be progress, it would be the bare minimum. Right now, we're at less than the bare minimum. We are at not losing $3.6 million. And we still don't have a teacher's contract, and I heard the words escape your lips today, the contract you promised to offer them is the same one that we know isn't good enough. If it's above county average, then county average sucks. Every month, every month, we, we sit here, we stand here, and we listen to Dr. McDowell lecturers about fiscal responsibility while he got a raise last year and 40 people got fired. Listen, I know it's expensive to live in this town. These people know that too. The ones you fired knew that too. And they're asking you to pay them fairly, to compensate them for their often thankless, unpaid, out-of-hours labor. On behalf of our kids, us, me, I'm not going to be here next year. I, I think a, a couple of people are going to be very happy that I'm not going to be attending board meetings anymore. I'm going to be off to college. I'll be far, far away from here, I'll be very glad to not have to deal with any of this anymore. But these people will still be here. Maybe not enough for you to play the blame game with anymore, Dr. McDowell. You blame Murphy's, Murphy's Funding Formula, you shift a blame to Malley for not getting the, not getting the deal done sooner, and you keep blaming the CEA for not coming to agreement about the contract. We know that the contract isn't good enough. We would, they would not be here asking for a new one for months, they would not be holding out this long if they had any doubts that what they're asking for is barely the bare minimum. You are not offering the bare minimum. You're offering handouts. You're getting a handout from the borough that you are not legally required to get, and you aren't very grateful for getting until today. This is a bailout, a bailout that you begged for. We will not thank you. I won't, anyway. We keep hearing about these national-state trends, you're supposed to be good at your job. And right now, I can look at every one of you and say that you aren't.
I, I would like to take, take a moment to mention that the, the board is responsible for the negotiation of the teachers' contracts. So I understand that there may be many issues or complaints or so forth, right, with the negotiation process, and that should be directed at the board. Thank you.
Good evening. We're giving my talk a little funny, it's that dental surgery on the way over here, so I'm drooling, forgive me, pardon me. Mayor, nicely done. Mayor, nicely done. That was a serious, nicely jumped job for three of you like this. And I think it's good that everybody's working together. Because, damn it, I pay taxes here. Now, I just have a simple question to ask, and I've been taking notes, and I'm a little slow right now, so forgive me, my, the anesthesia is getting to me. We're still hearing rumors that you're meeting people, folks at the Good Shepherd School. Are you still meeting to purchase that building? Is it happening this year? Or is something to be done for next year? Just like to know. Thanks.
Hi, Kate Nicely, 209 Lincoln Avenue, I have a 10th grader and 8th grader.
I think the statement was that there was a rumor, and, and we will not be addressing rumors. Thank you.
Kate Nicely, 209 Lincoln Ave. I'm going to reiterate the question a little bit, too. I have a 10th grader and 8th grader, I work at Tatum. Couple of things I've thought about throughout the budget process. I'm thinking about, with an 8th grader, all of the families that are leaving and spending tens of thousands of dollars a year in, in private education, how can we capture those back? How can we use them? So as we're shifting money around, maybe we can identify projects that could be funded privately somehow? As much as I hate it in theory for public education, I don't want the haves-to-have more, we are getting creative here, so I do kind of want to put that on the table, that maybe we can identify a project, like a new bathroom, that we can just pay for, because my kids hate going to the bathroom. It's a big part of their everyday life, they don't go to the bathroom at school because it's disgusting, gross, and scary. So I'd like things like that to be a priority, too, as we're getting creative with how we're using our budget. Teacher contracts, number one. Maybe we don't even have to go to the fact-finding right now. Maybe we, now we have our budget figured out, let's do it, let's meet right now, let's get it done. It is the most important thing. Our teachers are so tired, our mood is so down, we need to fix that first before anything is better.
Hi, I'm Crystal Ward at 325 Newton Avenue. I think the commissioners know my address by now. I hope people don't show up at my house. I've, I've been a resident here for about almost 19 years. I have no children, so I'm living here and paying taxes, and I don't use the school district, but I do agree that schools are important. A couple of concerns I have in this process is, first, I'm really glad everybody has been working together to come up with this proposal. An additional $91 in tax is a lot better than the almost $700 in increased tax that was communicated about a week ago or a month ago. So I'm, I'm glad that you came together. But one thing I'm thinking about is, Mr. Chu, you mentioned that the budget is based on funding the same level of services, that's the baseline. And considering, in my recent memory, the last two BOE referendums have failed by a large margin, I'm just wondering if there could be some out-of-the-box thinking? Why does the starting point begin at, you know, keeping the same level of services and facilities? We should be thinking about, what are all of the different options and choices and hard choices that need to be made? Because if you are relying on your long-term solution to be a new referendum later this year, you're going to need a Plan B if it doesn't pass. So what is that? And I'm really glad to hear that you're going to include community representatives. Because maybe together, if you get more community representatives, you can come up with a better Plan B. So I hope that you're not going to go into this long-term referendum, or the long-term solve with the referendum this fall, starting with assuming you're going to be able to keep the same level of services, because that may not pass. So what, what are your thoughts on that?
So there are just a couple of things that I, I think I, I want to make sure that we said here. So typically, with, in terms of public comments, this is a time for the, the board to listen to public comments. I think today is a little bit different in terms of the fact that there have been a lot of questions regarding the, the joint statement today. I think a lot of the questions that you brought, Mrs. Ward, are, are very important questions, and are things that, which we'll need to absolutely grapple with, so I appreciate them.
Great, thank you for hearing me.
Hi, I'm Liz Wilson, I live at 109 East Franklin Avenue in Collinswood, I have two kids in the district. I just had a quick question about the proposal, actually, and it refers back to a couple of questions that were asked here, which is about the, the, it is in the Borough's original proposal, the idea of merging your workspaces at the Old Zane Building and selling Borough Hall, and purchasing Good Shepherd is mentioned in that. So I, but then I noticed in the joint statement, that piece was not in there, neither of those pieces was in there. And I just would like to know more about that, and why that wasn't in there, if that's just that it's understood, or if that's being rejected by the Board of Ed. Thank you.
I can just, just from our perspective, later in the statement, it makes reference to other facilities, like, it's basically the, the, the request was to simply kind of do that, like, deal with the budget stuff first, and we're still going to be talking about that, okay?
Hi, my name is Lucille DeYoung, I live at 550 Grant Avenue, and it kind of feeds in the last question. This isn't a rumor, I'm just asking the question. Are you still interested in buying Good Shepherd? And then also, there's Garfield, are you thinking about selling that? And what happens to all of that? The other thing is, again, the joint cohabitation? I just love that idea. I mean, I think you guys really do need to work together, and why not do it living together? I think that's a wonderful idea, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Robin Hogan, CEA president, and teacher at Sharp Elementary School, 5th grade. I do want to recognize the hard work. I know an awful lot of hard work went in to make this partnership possible. And it really is, it is the path forward to improving things. There are a lot of really great things in this proposal. Things like the fields, that's an improvement for the community and the school. Working together to make sure seniors can access their full refund, great idea, love that. Talking about shared services, great way to save money, okay? All of those things are going to be a direct result of this partnership, and we're, we're pleased to see that, and very excited as an organization, okay? But this plan forward also, though, I have to say that we did notice that the, the very specific language that was used. And that is that you are supporting the budget in terms of your proposal. Proposal that maintains the status quo. A proposal that does not make significant movements towards county average for our organization as a whole. So we have, so I think it's time for us to focus, if we do have a shared vision on retaining and attracting teachers, I think it's time for us to use this pathway as a way to get back on track and focus on that goal, okay? And here's a great, here's a great way to save some money. Let's not go to fact-finding. Let's save the money that you're going to spend on a very, very expensive lawyer to support that effort. Let's put that into the contract, and let's move forward.
Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, we are going to move to Section 7, which is the Buildings, Surrounds, and Finance Committee. The chairperson, Mr. Craig, will present. Yes, please. Thank you to the commissioners. Thank you to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm just going to go ahead so that we're moving forward here. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we are seeking the approval of one item, which is 702, which is the preschool budget submission to the New Jersey Department of Education. Just as a reminder, the preschool budget is a separate grant from the money that we've been talking about today and the local fair share, so this is separate money to build up in the budget for our preschool. So do I have a motion for item 70, or no, that's you?
Is there a motion for approval of item 7.02?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Moving on to Section 8 Personnel Committee, some exciting news. Dr. Seltzer will present.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Tonight, we're seeking approval for one item, 8.02, which is moving on the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract between the Collingswood Building Services Employees Association and the Collingswood Board of Education for the 2025 through 2028 school years. I'm going to turn it over to, oh, yeah, go.
So is there a motion to approve item 8.02? And a second? All right, so then we're going to turn it over to Mr. Craig, who chaired the negotiations committee for the Buildings and Grounds Association.
Just want to quickly say thanks and share appreciation. Was able to chair this committee in negotiations with our Buildings and Grounds team. Very productive conversations. Were able to come to an agreement on a three-year deal, help providing services to keep our buildings running, and our services provided here for our students, and then also helping us with our shared services. Thought we were able to come to a really strong agreement here that helps benefit them and make it an attractive place. So I want to thank, again, our great Buildings and Grounds team.
Questions or comments from board members? And I also would like to extend my thanks to the Buildings and Grounds Association for their partnership there in working through the contract, and very excited to be able to meet their needs for the upcoming school years. With that, can we get a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
And before I give my microphone away, everybody, if you'd let Roger and I know availability for the 18th, so I can lock it in and advertise the meeting. So, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move to Section 9, which is the second section for public participation. Give me one second here. So the purpose of this public comment section is for additional, more general comments, and so it does not have to be on items discussed on the agenda. And so, again, in all fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment, and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lisa Caswell, 128 East Linden Ave. I have a 9th grader, a 6th grader, and a 3rd grader. And I just want to speak to those people who have spoken about how we need to cut more going forward in our budget. My 9th grader was so excited to go to high school last year. She picked her electives. She finally got to pick classes that were interesting to her and not just what had been put forth. It seemed like a period of like two to four weeks, she got an email a week saying that one of her electives had been canceled, until all of her electives were canceled. She ended up in a construction technology class, which, great, I'm really glad we have that class, but my kid is in it because public, I'm sorry, public speaking, child development, some sort of creative writing were all cut and taken away from her after she had signed up for them. And it's not just her, it's all the kids in our high school. So to say that we just need to keep the amount of teachers that we have and not expand back to teachers, teaching positions that were laid off, is concerning to me. I have a 6th grader who is in band. Ms. Ludwig is doing an amazing job with her, but Ms. Ludwig is doing the job of two music teachers. Our musics, our instrumental students in middle school and high school are not getting the group lessons that they had in elementary school. Friends of hers, friends of both of my kids are dropping out of instrument, instrumental music left and right, because it's really hard to keep up as a player of a musical instrument when you don't have a lesson in school on how to play your instrument and you sit in an ensemble class every day. I'm just really concerned about all of the comments made about cutting more from the budget when so much has already been taken away from our children, opportunities that students in surrounding districts have. I don't want to pull my kids. My 9th grader went to high school, and none of her friends came with her. All of her friends went to private schools or to tech schools. She went by herself, because I'm a public school teacher and we believe in public education. But I'm also a little bit sad about all of the amazing teachers that have been lost. And I hope that we can come up with some way forward to give those opportunities back to our high school kids.
Hi, my name is Eliana Oster, and I live at 1005 McGill Ave., behind Sharp. I am currently in 6th grade at Collingswood Middle School, and I was very excited for this new stage in Collingswood schools. I was told by teachers, principals, and our counselors about all the wonderful activities and clubs that I would experience here. I was so excited to take choir and band, and for the opportunity to show my family and friends what I could do. Unfortunately, my expectations were met with a totally different reality because of the unsettled teacher contracts. What should have been a rich and exciting introduction to life beyond elementary school has instead been a year of tension, sadness, and disappointment. There are no clubs or after-school activities, no in-person band or choir concerts, and no chance for my family or any others to see not just me, but all of the talented students perform. This situation hasn't only impacted me at the middle school. My little brother and all of his friends and classmates are missing out on activities that I was able to experience at Sharp, like field trips and teachers collaborating on PTA events. Not to mention incredible teachers leaving for opportunities in other districts. We will never get this school year back to experience all that we've missed. I know that my teachers desperately want to provide all of these activities and experiences to us, and I know that teachers all over the district don't want students to miss out on these experiences. Students are watching, and we know why this is happening. It's not fair to expect our teachers to work for free after-school hours when they aren't being treated respectfully by their employers. We want people who are, we want the people who are our major support at school to be treated with the same care and respect that we are expected to show them. Show them that respect and settle a fair contract. Teachers deserve to be paid fairly for everything they do. We don't have to lose more time or more amazing teachers. Please settle the teacher's contract.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Calderon. I live at 1012 Park Ave. I am a 32-year resident of Collingswood. I have never, never voted no for any school budget or referendum. This year was the first time I had to do that. From another angle, I just want to ask you, and in that time period, I have never heard of a superintendent having assistant superintendents. So my question to the doctor is, what do they do? Do they have a job function, or what do your assistants do?
So we may answer after you're done with your public comment, but this is a time for you to make your public comment. Thank you.
Okay.
So I think there's been a common question and referring. Yep.
Mary Ann Degenhart, 644 Stokes Ave. I just wanted to thank the board for doing whatever it was to bring the commissioners to the table to work through a really difficult situation, and hopeful that going forward, some of the other issues that are being raised tonight, teacher salaries, contracts, additional programs, can be addressed in some collaborative way. So, again, thank you for whatever it took to make that happen.
Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, I do want to address a couple things. First is, just looking at the number of comments that we got today, I think this is actually probably one of the rare occasions in which we have a lot of families here who, or folks here who maybe do not have kids in the school. And so I'd like to encourage the Collingswood community, especially those who don't have kids in school, to continue to come to our meetings and let your voice be heard. I think there's also a common question that we've heard over, I think, the last couple of years, of folks stating that this district and this board have hired assistants for the superintendent. And let me be very clear. What we're talking about is the assistant superintendent for business and operations. So that's our business administrator, who, that was a position that existed, has existed in every single school district, needs a business administrator. And we also have an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, which is a position that has also existed as a director of curriculum or supervisor of curriculum for many, many years, and which all districts also need. You know, something that I think I want to make sure, I dispel this idea that we have some bloated administrative staff, or that we are just hiring administrators left and right and not taking care of the overall health of the district finances. Now, our district is one of the, has one of the lowest per pupil total administrative costs. And so what it means is, the amount of money that we spend per pupil on administrators is one of the lowest in New Jersey. I think it's one of the lowest hundreds, so, out of the 7,000 or so school districts that New Jersey reports that out of, and within our own specific kind of comparative district grouping, we're in top 10 lowest total administrative costs. And in fact, one of the things I looked at was that in 2018, 2019, we had 23 administrators on staff. This year, we have 20 on staff. So I would like to make sure that I've clarified that this idea that we have bloated administration or so forth is false, and that if you look at the numbers, it's very clear that we have done and prioritized keeping our administrative costs low, because, again, we understand that there are a lot of services in which our students need. So again, I appreciate all folks for coming out here, and again, I encourage folks that, you know, new faces here that we haven't seen before, again, understanding that there are a lot of folks in Collingswood who do not have children or do not have children in schools. Encourage all to continue coming out to our board meetings. It's good to be able to hear from all different folks within the Collingswood community. And so with that, I would like to move to Section 10, our Endurement. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?